There's a door that's locked.
This one here?
Yeah.
Uh, no, actually.
It was open.
All right. Let's, uh... We'll call the work session to order. Everybody stand. Plague is up front here, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Uh, this is a work session. Um, so, uh, um, there will be, um, no votes as a normal work session, uh, mandates as we go through, but it is a discussion for, um, corporation business and, uh, considered in a public community meeting. So, Mr. Ong, uh, we have, uh, some things here. The relief fund, the old policy, maybe some project updates, and, um, meeting with, of course, with the construction managers, uh, to be held at a future date here potentially. And then also, um, we'd like to get through with, um, a minimum salaries, uh, for teachers that, uh, the state is looking at doing. And so, I am actually going to turn it over to you, uh, if you would, uh, for the funds.
If you, if you want to pull out the packet that says summary of relief packages. So, we have, we have received three different, uh, rounds of relief money. And the CARES, the CARES money obviously came, uh, under President Trump. And that, uh, that budget has been submitted. Uh, it's not complete. Uh, some of it, uh, some of it may have to be amended just because of changes that have happened and, and it was, uh, it was a short timeframe to put it together and, and so on. And, and so, uh, we will, we will get you a summary of that as, as it gets closer to being closed. But it, it was obviously a, a smaller amount. So, S R two was the first, uh, program to come out with the new administration, and it amounted to $613,000. It, uh, was due, uh, earlier this month, at least a preliminary budget, and we did submit that, and I've got some specifics to share with you about some of the things that we included in that. And, uh, we, we do expect that, uh, we will be amending it. We had to submit it, uh, again, early, and, and, uh, I'm sure we will amend it to take care of any, uh, changes or ideas, uh, that you have or costs have changed or programs have changed. So, that, that is also in the works. And then finally, the S R three is $1,376,000. And it, uh, we got a, a notification today that it is due, the preliminary budget for it is due June 25th. So, uh, you can see the total amount is $2,152,749. So, it is, uh, I think I have told you before that I've never faced a situation where we were challenged to spend money, but, uh, we have been challenged to spend money by these, uh, programs, or at least, uh, to determine how to best, uh, use them to meet the needs of our students, staff, and community. So, if you go on to the, uh, S R two summary, these are a lot of the things, or some, many of these things are things that you, uh, ask for and, uh, going forward. And one of the, uh, one of the things we have not done with these grants is to, uh, ask for an administration fee, and yet, uh, they take hours and hours of time to write, to follow up on, and so on. And they would, uh, I suggested that we, uh, we apply it to Andrea. She has to do a lot of the paperwork. Obviously, Allison is, has been a major help in helping organize this and do it, but it's, but it's a lot simpler than to just take it out of one person's salary. And Allison's salary is already allocated over several, uh, different categories. So, so that's a plan that we have. You wanted to reduce class size in kindergarten, second, and third grade, and so, we are, uh, we are going to allocate some of those funds out of S R two. Uh, probably some of the remaining funds will come out of S R three. We're adding staff because of just simply trying to help students, uh, populations based on, uh, their social, emotional, and physical well-being. And so, that includes that functional behaviorist we, uh, you approve, uh, part-time health aide at Camden, uh, English language teacher of record. So, we need to, uh, we needed to, uh, provide for that. And then finally, uh, special aid, uh, and again, English language intervention, interventionist at the middle school. Now, there's a lot of PD involved in, uh, in this. We have to address learning loss, both for our students, which the above items do, and then, uh, and then also for our, uh, our staff. And so, we, probably our biggest need, and, uh, Mrs. Circle can speak to this if she wishes, but we need, uh, instructional help in our math program, K through 12. And, and so, we have hired a, a coach to come in and do that, work directly with our staff for multiple days, full days, and, and just simply see if we can do a much better job of organizing, planning, and, and carrying out instructions for our students in math. Can you comment on that, or?
Other than, we also are going to be going through math textbook adoptions next year, so I think it's important that we have a specialist in the area of math, working with those teachers, to make sure that we are in alignment and moving forward. And we really just need a consistent, um, math program moving forward. So, it'll hopefully fit, uh, think areas need.
So, how many hours of U T is that person?
Um, does that person comes in for days, like, two days?
Ten, ten days a year. And then, then they're available at all times for coaching and, and for, uh, email and so forth.
And some virtual P D.
So, is that six through 12, or K through 12 was supposed to be?
Six through 12. And then, uh, we have felt for a while that our, uh, middle school needed, uh, help again, uh, within all areas in terms of, uh, instructional coaching, of lesson organizing, of, of even scheduling. And so, uh, we have hired Diane McKinley, who's worked with us before, to, to come in and, and, and work on this. It also involves learning loss and, and how to best make up for that. And so, this is, this is the other part of the grant that we want to, uh, include in, in S R two. Now, she has applied for a grant for all schools at Wild Bash Valley, who, who are participating, and if that grant comes through, that will reduce the cost of this, uh, substantially. That we do not, we don't know yet if that's going to happen, but we are budgeting for the full amount. Again, any comment on, on that part of it?
Um, the Diane McKinley component, she actually has already done this instructional coach piece, K through six. And then, she worked with us, nine through 12. So, we somehow inadvertently missed the middle school section. So, I think it's important, once again, for that alignment, K through 12. It really helps, honestly helps me align feedback and make sure that we're seeing good instruction. So, it will align the administrators, that we're all looking for the same thing instructional, and then also align the instructional strategies with them.
Uh, several of these smaller items are, again, just to simply, uh, help our, uh, help our staff with, uh, professional development to address learning loss and, and, uh, there's a book study that, that's going to be done, and, uh, we're, we're, uh, that's not a lot of books, but we're hoping that there'll be more, and, and we will be able to make the adjustment to provide those, to just get, get people working together. Culturize, it is a culturizing book, and again, it's a, it's a book that Mrs. Circle would like to see, uh, many of our staff be able to, uh, get and, and use going forward. Orton Gillingham Virtual Training. Would you like to comment on that, Melissa, please?
Uh, yes. Our dyslexia mandate requires that our teachers have specialized training. Orton Gillingham is one way of meeting that. Um, so, we're asking that we make sure that those new teachers coming in, that they're sent, and that they receive that training.
And then a math intervention program, uh, that's K through eight, it's, uh, RTI. And again, uh, not a great deal of cost, but something we think will certainly help our, uh, our staff with strategies in terms of being able to, uh, uh, help with, uh, with helping students that are falling behind in math. The, uh, how about the F and B Benchmarking Kit?
That's another, uh, reading intervention that many of our interventionists use, and our classroom teachers also need it as well. So, this will provide them with the extra resources, um, to share, because right now they have one kit, and they're in need of more. It's been a long time since it's been replaced.
And then, uh, pre-K S E L kids?
Oh, social emotional learning doesn't exist, uh, curriculum-wise at the preschool level, so we would like to get a common language that builds up into leader in need. And this is one way, this was suggested by Dr. Lori Desatalls, who is a big, um, social emotional learning. Um, this would help our preschool program with their emotions and regulation.
Under student family wellness, uh, these are mainly reimbursement items, expenses we incurred, uh, from March of, of 20, uh, through this, uh, last, uh, school year. And, uh, we paid, uh, we paid a great deal to get our meals delivered. We had transportation costs related to that. Excuse me. We purchased, uh, portable air sanitizers to be able to use all over the school corporation and all the buildings, all the classrooms, as needed if, if we had a situation that, that warranted them. A, uh, we bought a lot, or we, excuse me, we updated all our AEDs. Many of them were, uh, needed it badly. And, uh, we purchased Edmenta for our students who were doing virtual learning. And this is a reimbursement for that cost, which was a necessary expense during, uh, during COVID. Uh, you, uh, agreed to pay the nurses for overtime, so that will come out of the grant. And also, we employed two nurses aides this year, uh, to keep up with the, all the issues related to COVID. Any, any questions on those? Go Guardian is a program that, uh, tells teachers what students are working on, on their computers. And, and so, it, uh, I don't know if Mr., uh, Bill would like to, uh, share anything on that or not?
Uh, it's just, it's like a Big Brother. So, if you all had a computer, and I, as a teacher, needed you to all go to a website, I literally could do move, move, and would shove it out to you. It would control what's on the screen. So, for the past several years, we, we hoped, that's a strategy, not the best, we've hoped by teachers walking around the room, they would catch the kids if they were off task. Well, the kids, they're, they're sneaky sometimes. So, this really can lock everything else out. It's, it's been a really nice addition, for sure.
And that, if I'm not mistaken, that also, uh, because the students are using our computers at home on our network.
They log, yep, they log in with their school credentials, which they, in theory, would have to on the school devices, yes.
And so, when that's happening, the teachers would also be able to, to be aware that students are focused on their lessons.
We actually, we had a parent who was openly doing banking on a child laptop, and we had to point out to them that we could see them typing in all their banking information. So, it's a, it's a learning curve for all.
Is that a K through 12?
It is K 12, yep. It's a license for every user, yes. I even, it honestly, I even use it in the timeout room at the elementary. I can put a kid in a, in a Go Guardian session, and while I'm doing my work, I can still see where that kid is. I can make it so he's only in this area versus hoping he or she is completely, duly grown.
Lider. Lider, wider.
And, uh, Apex expenses going forward. Apex is our credit recovery, uh, software that is used at the high school. And, and so, it, it's been pretty crucial, and it's, it's really important, and, and I don't know if you feel like it's going to be used a great deal more this coming year or not, but that's our impression, that because, again, students are behind, excuse me, we, uh, we are going to see that, uh, see that become much more popular. And then finally, something we discussed when we were talking about book rent, that is, we have charged a great deal of money, uh, toward parents to provide for school supplies. This will allow us to purchase those things. I think it partly, it's a safer option, because rather than these things coming from, uh, you know, 1,400 different sources, uh, they'll come from a very limited number, and it'll be uniform, and all students will have it. And the ben, the big benefit is that it will relieve parent costs. So, that is the summary of S R two. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. So, um, between CARES and S R two, uh, have we received any of that money, and have we used any of it already? And then, how long do we have to use that money, those monies?
The, uh, the CARES money, we have gotten some of the reimbursements for, for that. I couldn't give you an exact number. I can give you a follow-up.
I can, I can look real quick while you're talking. Oh, go ahead. But the, so the, all of these grants are similar to like all the title grants, where you have to spend the money first and then ask for the reimbursements. So, I'm going to look to see if I can go into, oh, the basic thing.
The, we have two years to spend the S R two money. And, and so, uh, that, uh, I don't think that will be the case for S R two. I don't think most of these things will, uh, will wait that long. As soon as we begin to, to get the opportunity and the money's not available yet, we will start asking reimbursements, especially for those things down in the, yeah, category. So, you can see that, again, that's a, that is a substantial amount of money. And then the S R three is, is got the, uh, is got the same date. It will go, uh, until I believe the final, the very, it'll finally close out in December of, uh, 2023.
Yep, go, go ahead, I'll.
We'll keep going.
Yep.
Uh, the NOLA plan, Mr. Ong?
Well, uh, I met with, uh, I, I met with the NOLA representatives, and, uh, I'll be honest with you, I don't know, I, I wouldn't, I hesitate to tell you how far Delphi is behind on policy, but I think probably you, having been on the board for a while, have a better idea even. But we are, we might be a couple of years behind on, on NOLA policy. So, my, my suggestion is, as, as we begin, begin to go forward, I think it would be wise to have a person focus on, uh, on NOLA policy, to, uh, to share, uh, their suggested reviews with you, and, and just then have a, uh, comprehensive plan to, to, uh, move, move all those policies forward. And there, again, there are a lot of them. The one we're waiting for right now is Title IX. They don't have the language for it ready yet, but it's the one that's probably the, the, uh, most immediate need, and, and I think we'll be acting, hopefully, we'll be acting on it in June, if, if they have it by that time. But, uh, I, I could give you a long, long list of those that are ready, and, and I, I would guess there could probably be 40 of them that you need to, to be addressing at this time. But again, my, my suggestion is some kind of a systemic, uh, look at those, and then, uh, a way of, on a routine brace, uh, basis, bring them forward. I, I don't know how a single superintendent can keep up with it and address it and, and be able to, uh, to work with. Any comments or questions on NOLA? I know it's probably one of your favorite things to do, so.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt. We, we need to have, uh, somebody, uh, to help us look over. Some of this really gets vague, and I know some of our stuff, probably what we desire through either handbooks or whatever, needs to be updated and brought forward.
And the other part of it is, we need to get the technology for it updated. We need to make sure that you, what you're looking at under NOLA is the same thing that the administrators and staff are looking, and also the public. And, and I think there have been some serious technology issues with that. Uh, when I, when I talk, uh, uh, policies with the administrators at times, they, when they go look, they don't see what I see. So, we, uh, we'll get all that, we'll get all that straightened out. That's, that's on my radar to work on in, uh, probably next week, and, and we'll see if we can get that set up first and then, and then get going on it.
Well, yeah, 30 days here before. So, we gotta have that done pretty quick now. Uh, I appreciate actually looking into that. I know you're going to do a lot behind the scenes right now, just trying to get it to the point that we can start, you know, looking at it, and so, uh, we appreciate it.
Okay. We have two construction management firms we, we want to meet with. Unfortunately, we were talking about meeting on June the 7th to hear from them, but, uh, Performance Services is not available that, that date. They, they, uh, the reps are not in the office that week, and, uh, Tecton is. So, the question becomes, do you want to still have a separate meeting, or do you want to invite both of them to come in early on the, uh, 14th to, uh, to see their, uh, presentation, let, give you a chance for some Q and A? How do you, what would be your preference?
So, uh, we would probably need to give each one, uh, hour, do you think? What's the word, I think? If we do it all at one time, if we're doing it on the night of the board meeting, that means we'd have to be committed to start at 5:00, or 5:30 at the latest, maybe. What's everybody's thinking? The other option is meet separate nights with them, right?
I would prefer to do it in one night.
Do it one night?
I think that way my questions and stuff carry over and.
Question in mind?
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with one, I, I don't have to remember something from the back. Chris, any opinion? Chris, any opinion?
No opinion.
Okay.
You know my opinion.
I know. I just ask them. As do. All right. Well, Mr. Ong, I guess, uh, let's set it up, uh, for that meeting.
We, we probably will, uh, need to take action then tonight, the regular board meeting, to decide. I am assuming you're going to suggest a 5:00 PM start time?
Yes.
And on May the 14th?
Yes.
Okay.
Or do you get a work session?
Oh, what did I say? I'm sorry. Man.
You want to go back in time, don't you?
Thank you.
We could do that under work session. Mr. Ong, not a board meeting, but a work session in front of.
If, if, I, yes, I was assuming.
Yeah, let's do a work session in front, which will start at 5:00, just like, like now, earlier.
Okay.
I had those numbers, if now's the time.
Right.
Um, so, that first CARES, the award was 162,853.19. As of right now, we have claimed 115,232.10, leaving a balance of 47,621.09. Um, not saying that those haven't already been spent, but maybe just haven't been reimbursed.
Nothing on S R two yet, or three, as far as?
No, so S R two, as he said, we've submitted the grant, um, and then it's been kicked back to us, and now we've got to work through this type and aspect of it, and then.
All the loops and loops.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If you, uh... Look at projects, which I, which I skipped over, I apologize. So, uh... I gave you two sheets. Let's start with the 2019 bond project. It's pretty amazing that it, for a fund that size, the amount of interest we have been earning is, is, uh, is almost, makes you cry. But, uh, we have earned some interest, and so, the, uh, current balance on that, on that money is 340, 343,000. Now, we had already agreed, uh, or you had approved, uh, doing those two roof sections, uh, to get, to, to get that done, and, and plans are to get that, to do that this, uh, this summer with henshaw. Uh, in order to expedite the process, they asked for us to, uh, go ahead and pay for, uh, the materials that they need for, for the project, which was a, a majority of the project. And, and so, uh, we, we have already paid 141,000 dollars for materials. So, when the, when the project is complete, we'll owe an additional 115,000, which will reduce our balance to, uh, roughly 227,000 dollars. Now, we had a, pretty much, a, a crisis with our water lines in the north end of the gym. We, uh, uh, we agreed on a bid to, to get those replaced, and, and I think, for the most part, that is done, and that was 40,000, 41,760, which took us down to 185,000. We had already said that's. We had already said that the tap pointing was a critical issue at the elementary. And we accepted a bid for 70,685 for that, which further reduces the balance to 114,000. We have, uh, one thing I won't miss when I am no longer in this office is hearing that panel outside my door beeping. And it, it continues to beep. And, and there is one fire alarm loop at the middle school, high school that is, is causing a great number of those false alarms. And I would, I'm going to ask later in the meeting that you allow me to contact Brand Electric or contract with them to reduce that one loop. They've given us a bid for all the loops, and there are several of them. And we'll look at that on the second page of this. But that is a 24,850 dollar expense. And again, which takes our, our balance down to 90,000 dollars. Now, we just had our first leak in the water lines at the south end of the gym. And we, we don't know yet if, if it's the same level of crisis as the north end. We, that, the bid we got for that, for replacing those water lines was incredibly low. And so if, if we bid the south end, I would fully expect that number to be much higher. Uh, we were hoping we would have a number, but we, we don't. And so we are, we are still waiting on that. And that's probably the, kind of the, the key to the whole completion of this, of all these bond projects. The, we, we have a company that's going to offer us a bid on the bridge repair. They were out again today to finalize it and promised Ross that they would, they would give him some numbers yet today. So promises are, never mind. We don't have, so, so that's in, that's out there. And now, one thing that, that I, I think again, is, is pretty critical is sealing and striping the middle school parking lot, as well as repairing some of the areas that are damaged. And we have a low bid, or a suggested bid for that. And I still think it's, I think it's critical for the community that we take a, like, take a look at, at creating a, a meeting space for the school board that's, has modern technology in it to be, for people to be able to see what we're looking at and also to, to be able to participate in the meetings. Because I think virtual attendance is going to be a reality from, from now on. So, so those are the two other priorities that I would suggest to you. But this, this is somewhat on hold, waiting, waiting for some action tonight and also waiting for some numbers on those two projects. So any, any questions or comments on, on any of those things? Now, we have talked about a, a new bond to address the phase two of the, of the original project you did in 2019. And so that is what, what the second sheet is all about. The total cost on those, those 14 loops is 287,000 dollars. And it, just, just for those listening, so that you understand, it's not only an issue of splice wire, it's also an issue of, of those, those low data lines being too close to high, high-power electrical lines. And so all of those things that are ongoing problems that, that, that need to be addressed. There are two last phases of the roof section. Each of them are going to cost around 150,000 dollars. So that's about an additional 300,000 that would likely go into that bond. The boilers at the bus garage need to be replaced. We, we have bids for those, but they are, they are not finalized yet. I asked all the buildings to take a look at their, their carpet needs. And they, they were more than happy to give me numbers, which turned out to be substantial numbers. But it's something we need to, we need to look at, both for hallways and classrooms. And, and I know they were hoping that perhaps something this summer could be done. But again, that, that 2019 bond just didn't have the capacity remaining to do that. By far, the biggest item that was remaining from your prior project was to upgrade the HVAC at, at the high school, middle school. That the main part of that was replacing the equipment for 15 classrooms. And that was estimated at 2.3 million dollars. Again, that may be low now, considering what's happened with costs for metal and for HVAC equipment with the demand that, that we've seen. And then a lot of the piping at the high school, not just those supply lines, but a lot of the piping just is, let's see, 55 years old. And they, they are, they are wearing out. And, and so that's, that's something that was originally estimated at 750,000. And again, I, I think that's a, I think that's a very low offer. These last two things might be projects for the bond. I mentioned them to you, for the new bond, I mentioned them to, to you as part of the old bond. So you can see that with a, with rough numbers, that's about 3.83 million. And Baker Telly estimates that on a 10-year lease for a new bond, you could borrow up to 4.3 million. So I don't think it will be a problem getting to 4.3 million, just depending on what you, what you choose as a priority going forward. And, but I need to share some of this information back with the two contractors because they were, they were wanting, in order to make a presentation to you, some specific information about how much it was going to be and the focus of, on what kind of things we were going to do. So do you have any other suggestions or additions that you're concerned about? To be honest, we've had, had a lot of requests for classroom equipment and furniture. Again, same issue, just aged things that, that need to be replaced. And so again, I don't think it's going to be an issue identifying needs. It might be an issue prioritizing needs.
Hey guys, any comments, questions?
On the fire loops, fire alarm loops?
Yeah.
I think I mentioned the 14, I don't know what. How many have we already completed? Right over the last two or three years, we, this has been a big deal project. Is this outside of the ones that have been completed or?
Well, I'm, I, I'm not sure they've been completed as much as they've been repaired. I don't think they're new. I don't think we replaced them. I think we were continually repairing them. We spent a lot of money with Brenco, but I think a lot of that was repair money and not, not, not originally. See, Brand Electric would do this work, not, not a fire alarm company, so to replace these lines.
I was thinking we spent money to actually fix that a couple of years ago and then find out this, the one ghosting thing was, was happening and.
So with new technology today, wireless, have we looked into what that cost would be versus the other? Mrs. Gill, is Camden, did they, when they redid Camden, was that wireless?
Um, I would like to think so.
I thought that's.
Because we can remove the unit if we need to.
So I, is that some?
On fire?
On fire alarms?
I don't think you can do that. I mean, you'd have to have battery backup on stuff. I mean, I, I don't know if that means fire code wireless.
I think if we did those, they would.
I'm not for sure what they did. I just know they can remove that.
I know Ross has talked, has talked to Brand about that. And, and also, we are, we are looking at an agreement for a, a company to do our inspections and recommendations. And so this, we could certainly, we'll certainly get with them and see what, what they say.
I mean, as soon as we put it in, it's going to be outdated, I know that. But if there's something like that, that may allow us in the future to be able to plug and play if there's issues versus have to retrace wire or something happens. I know it's, I hate to think that, go up above there and see what that arm looks like.
Has, has Brenco submitted a bid?
Yes.
On this? And Brand is the lower bid or?
Oh, no, no, Brenco doesn't do this work.
Oh, I thought they did fire alarm work.
Well, but this, this is a wiring, this is strictly a wiring job.
I see.
So we, we sought bids from, from different electrical contractors.
And that would have our internet also because of the ghost that's involved in it? Or is it strictly just for the fire?
Well, I, it, it may cause less interference, but I don't think the wifi or the, the electrical is, is, I mean, the, the, being able to get the internet has been that much of an issue.
Okay, okay.
All right, that, any, any other questions on, on possible projects?
Did we cover the tennis courts anywhere here on that?
It's, it's a, that probably should have been listed on this for, for, because originally, we talked about it for the bond. But, but again, if you think it's a priority over, over some of these other things, and, and also the amount of money left in there may fit that tennis court bid. I, I want to say the tennis court bid is to, to, to repair it and, and repaint it, I thought was around 15,000 dollars.
Okay, okay. As we've got, I think it was court four that had pretty significant cracking now. And maybe three had cracking now.
Okay, all right.
So it's going to become a bigger problem.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll revisit it and thank you and, and, and see if the scope of it will change, obviously change with the.
If we don't get it prepared before winter comes in, it'll just keep tearing it up.
Aren't there some things on this new bond already on, still getting paid care of on the 2019? With money remaining on like the group?
No, these, these two projects are the last two projects after what we're doing this summer. These two roofing projects. Uh, there's one left at the high school and one left at the middle school that have not been addressed.
Last two sections that they have done. Every year we do a section.
Yeah, so what's the, is 100, you've already spent 141,000 on the material?
Right.
Are these projects coming up?
No, that's currently.
We, we, we bid, we bid those, the, the two you wanted to do this summer. I, I can get you that information. I think it was 287,000 dollars for the two. And, and out of that, we, we, they asked us to buy them or get the materials on hand to expedite it so they could, they could get it all done this summer. But those are, those are four different roof sections. The two we're doing this summer and then the, the, the remaining two that will need to be done and.
And that's what's on the new bond then?
Yes.
Okay.
When you say sum cost could be considered from S R three money, what, what is sum? Was that a third, a half?
Well, it, it depends on how, how you want to allocate that 1.3 million dollars. So I'm, I'm just saying that.